Good evening. I'm Martha Norcunis and I will be serving as the moderator for the forum this evening. The forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, the Murfreesboro Communications Department, the Murfreesboro Cable Commission. It's my pleasure to welcome you to this forum. Tonight we'll hear remarks from the city council candidates. Before introducing the candidates, I'd like to outline the procedure for this forum. Each candidate will be allowed one minute to make an opening statement. When all candidates have completed their opening statements, the first of several questions will be asked. The candidates have not been told what questions will be asked. Each candidate will be given 45 seconds to answer each question. The candidates will have one minute to answer the last question, as well as make closing remarks if they wish to do so. I'll begin by introducing the candidates. They're each seeking election to one of three seats on the city council. These are important roles to the citizens of Murfreesboro and we hope to hear them address the substantive issues facing all of us. I want to thank them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Seated on the left and speaking first tonight is Axel David, followed by Madeline Harris, Candy Joyce, Rick LaLance, Brian Patterson, Jeff Rainwater, Stephen Shirley, and Doug Young. Mr. David, you may begin your opening statement.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, City TV, and everyone in this room who cares about our great city. My name is Axel David. I'm originally from Indianapolis, Indiana. Most of my career experience has been in emergency management protective services. Most recently, I was a commercial real estate agent. I was affiliated with the Oath Keepers, the National Motors Association, the Campaign for Liberty, the National Rifle Association. I was briefly in the United States Army Reserve as a combat support hospital. I'm truly a people's candidate. I have no conflict of interest. I have no interest in running for higher office. I want to be your voice in the borough. I understand the role of a city councilman is to represent the residents and not special interests. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Harris?
Good evening. My name is Madeline Scales Harris and I am running for city council. I am truly blessed and privileged to walk in the footsteps of service to this community. I believe that we serve God by serving our fellow man, and the blessed of us must help the rest of us. I want to continue to be part of those things that have made Murfreesboro a great place to live, along with managing the growth, the budget, and seeing that all citizens enjoy a good quality of life. Four years ago, I raised my hand and I took an oath, and I promised you, the citizens of Murfreesboro, that I would listen to your concerns, speak up, and follow through. The next four years, with your help, I will continue to listen, speak up, and follow through. Thank you.
Ms. Joyce?
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Candy Roberts-Joyce. I'm a 40-year citizen in Murfreesboro. I came to MTSU in 1974 and have been here ever since, never left. I am thoroughly excited about being able to continue my volunteer service in this community, having worked with the Destination Rutherford program, currently serving on the St. Clair Senior Center Board, and making sure that in a lot of the community service realms that I participate, we have the services, we have the access to serving our community, and we hope that I can continue to serve the city in a bigger range by being on the city council. Thank you.
Mr. LaLance?
Hi. Thank you very much. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and City TV also. Again, my name is Rick LaLance and I'm a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro. I currently am a financial consultant for Pinnacle Financial Partners. That's for about the last 13 years. I married my wife Leanne and two kids. I've got a 10-year-old in fourth grade at the Discovery School of Rogers and a seventh grader at Siegel Middle School named Adam. I've done multiple volunteer work. I worked as the chairman for the Government Affairs Council for the Chamber of Commerce. I worked in children's ministry at my church and am currently serving on the board of the Limbaugh Library Foundation.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you. My name is Brian Patterson. I'm a Christian, husband, father, son, and friend. After graduating from college with my degree in secondary education, I started a small business here in Murfreesboro in 2002. A couple of years later, I convinced the prettiest girl I could find to marry me. A year after that, we had the first of two boys. He's here tonight with me, Will. Hello? As leader of a business and leader of a household, I've come to know exactly what makes Murfreesboro a great city, but also see room for improvement. Better protection of property rights, less restrictions on small businesses, better spending priorities, and fewer conflicts of interest in our local government. We must improve upon these things if we want Murfreesboro to remain a great place in the future. I ask for your vote April 15th and let your vote be one for better local government and for a more prosperous Murfreesboro. Thank you.
Mr. Rainwater?
Hi. My name is Jeff Rainwater. I've lived in Murfreesboro for 16 years now. I came here right after college, and I've never left. I've spent my entire career in the corporate world, working in corporate finance and the healthcare industry. What I'd like to do now is use that experience I've gained in the corporate world to apply that, to try to make Murfreesboro one of the greatest communities possible. I like Murfreesboro, and I thought it was a great place for me to raise my family. This is why I live here today. One thing we need to do is we need to make sure that we act responsibly and leave a better Murfreesboro for our children than what we inherited. Thank you.
Mr. Shirley?
Good evening. My name is Stephen Shirley. I am a longtime resident of Murfreesboro. My wife and I have four children, 14, 13, eight, and six, so a lot of the issues that pertain to families pertain directly to us. We are very involved in this community. You'll find me most frequently on the soccer fields as a coach, as a player, as most specifically as a referee with Murfreesboro Soccer Club and with TWSAA. I am former contributing columnist with the Daily News Journal, where I spent a great deal of time writing about issues that pertain to our community, issues that face our city. And as such, I've developed a passion for this community, and that is why I'm running for council, to provide responsible representation to the people of our city.
Mr. Young?
Thank you. I'm Doug Young, a lifelong resident of Murfreesboro, a graduate of Central High School and of MTSU. I've also served as an army officer. I'm married and have three grown children and four granddollars. I'm running for reelection because I want our grandchildren and children to have the same or better opportunities that we've had: a good education, good jobs, and a great quality of life. As a councilman, I have voted for 12 balanced budgets that have contained no property tax increases. Our bond rate is favorable. We have top-notch police and fire protection and quality schools. I want to continue to work with partnerships in all sectors to recruit better jobs for Murfreesboro. I ask for your vote on April 15th.
We'll now have questions of 45-second answers, and we'll begin with you, Ms. Harris. How have your experiences prepared you for this job?
My experience being in Murfreesboro and a resident all my life has prepared me a lot, and unbeknown to me, at the time when I was growing up, I was raised in the home of politicians, so I learned a lot unconsciously, I would say. But getting to know the people of Murfreesboro and attending the public schools here, Murfreesboro is a great place to live. And my experience in being on the council, I have found that we have the state of the art: the hospital, the Chamber of Commerce, our schools. And financially, Murfreesboro is in very sound shape. So therefore, all of these things put together and being the house that we house the number one...
Oh, did you want to say one last thing?
We house the number one university in the state, and I'm proud of that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Joyce?
I'm currently employed with the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors, and just this weekend, celebrated my 20th anniversary there. One of the skills that I will bring is being able to work with a variety of consumers, as well as professionals. Part of the job that I provide every day is listening to people, making sure that they have the services that they need, answering their problems, and helping to work through any kind of conflict that they might have. I also served with the Public Building Authority, with the Leadership Rutherford, being the original director of Leadership Rutherford for 70 years, so I've been engaged in a lot of the community service. And then having worked on the Public Building Authority and the Metro Government Study Group as a representative of the city. All of those things kind of bring together the vast activities that are going on in our city, and I've experienced them all. Thank you.
Mr. LaLance?
Yes, thanks. I think that my job as a financial consultant has helped me a lot. Basically, every day, all I do is work with people and try to figure out solutions to issues. I have to think about both sides of whatever might be on the table and try to come up with an idea what fits. I think also, living here all my life gives me a unique perspective. I've seen a lot of changes over the last many years, and I think that will help me kind of build a vision for what the future of Murfreesboro might look like.
Mr. Patterson?
Thanks. As I said in my introductory remarks, I own a small business, and it is a customer service business. I think that in and of itself is what small government, local government, is all about: providing service to taxpayers and to residents. I'm accessible. As my wife often tells me, I am too accessible with my mobile phone and various social media outlets available to me. But that is certainly something that I would take to the council, to be accessible and ready to answer questions and do whatever it takes to get things done for taxpayers.
Mr. Rainwater?
Spending my entire career in corporate finance, one thing I do know what it takes is, I know what it takes when companies want to locate in areas. I've been on the other side of the fence. I've sat there with senior management. I've done the analysis on where we should locate that next office, or where we need to put that next call center. And I know what we need to do to actually try to get better businesses, better paying jobs to come to our community. Also, spending my entire career in healthcare, healthcare is one of the most challenging industries we have in our country today, and making those hard decisions that have to be made in healthcare plans and so forth, and what coverage should be offered and so forth, that those hard decisions prepare you for making the hard decisions on the city council. And by that, along with my passion for Murfreesboro, I believe will make me an excellent candidate. Thank you.
Mr. Shirley?
I think my number-one experience that prepares me for the job is actually dealing with the government on a regular basis, both as a voter, as a constituent, but also in my current job as an extension agent with the Tennessee Cooperative Extension Program, where I provide technology and communication support to our agents across the state, and helping them and assisting them meet the needs of their community, meet the needs of their public. In my time of dealing with our current city council or past city councils, understanding the need to be accessible and specifically responsive, always being responsive to our voters.
Mr. Young?
Growing up in this community, I've seen this community come a long way, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I've served as a little league coach, a soccer coach, a Boy Scout leader. I've served the community in the political realm. I've been chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm a member of the Planning Commission, and I've been a council member for 12 years. These give us insight into how government works, where it's going, and how it should be worked with the community. But I think the best experience I have is 40 years running a retail operation, dealing with the public every day. I have to meet their expectations and their wants and their needs continually, and that's what I try to bring to government and do bring to government. Thank you.
Mr. David?
Most of, or all of my experiences on the other side of this table. I've been activist for a long time. It started with the red light cameras. It went from there with the Greenway Extension. Because of all my work, I've had a lot of people from the community recognize me, ask me questions about the government, ask me questions about public policy, things of that nature. I volunteer. I volunteer in the community in more organizations than I can name. I'm very, very engaged in this community. I'm very, especially engaged in municipal politics, and I think that qualifies me.
Thank you. The second question, we'll begin with Ms. Joyce, and that question is, what do you feel is the main responsibility of a council member?
Obviously, representing the city's interests, the citizens and their dollars being spent well to serve them is the most important part of what the council is. But to accomplish those things, you have to be able to listen, to be able to negotiate, to be able to understand the needs of the individual and where that fits with the community's priorities. And I'm hoping that my opportunity to serve on the council will allow me to use those negotiating skills, those listening skills that I've had in my employment for a long time, and put them to service for our citizens.
Mr. LaLance?
Yeah, well said. I would agree with basically all that and just say that I think, you know, listening to the needs of the people is going to be of utmost importance. The desires of what people want to do, the citizens here, how they want to see our town grow, the changes that we need to make, and how we can make our services more efficient, I think that all that is so important. And then taking all that information and making a responsible decision.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, again, going back to service, that's the number-one responsibility of a council member, is to serve. Be a good steward of taxpayer dollars, find creative solutions to problems as they come up. We can't always go to the purse and find more money. Sometimes, we need to think outside the box for those solutions. So beyond that, I think the main catchphrase is service.
Mr. Rainwater?
I think the number-one thing is, we need to be responsible to the taxpayer and the taxpayer's wallet. We need to be conscious that every dollar we spend comes out of their wallet. And it's not, it's not just that, you know, the money is part of the tax pull or everything. A citizen actually had to put that dollar up and write that check. We need to be very conscious of that as we move forward. We need a city that lives within its means and provides the necessary services first and then luxury items second. And we need to move forward with that and be responsible back to the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you. Council members must be accessible and accountable. We must be responsible representatives of the will of the people and the wishes and desires of our residents. We serve as liaisons between the public and the government, and as such, we owe the public a responsibility. We owe them our service to always listen, always respond in the best interests of our community. Far too often, the votes or the interests of a few outweigh the needs of many.
Mr. Young?
I think listening is extremely important, but also taking what we hear from our constituents and turning it around and putting ourselves in their shoes, looking at problems and opportunities from their perspectives is extremely important. Service has been mentioned. We need to be accessible. We need to be available to service our citizens. We need to provide the services of our citizens, and we need to be knowledgeable about the government and how things work and express those things to people that have questions for us. Service, listening, and performance are important, very important.
Mr. David?
One of my first campaign platforms, it's to be transparent, approachable, and accountable. The main job of a city councilman is to represent the citizens. This means having a public forum before the session starts. This means actually answering your phone calls. This means actually answering your emails. Secondly, you're a public servant. Are you fiscally responsible for the taxpayers? A $241 million debt is not fiscally responsible. The third part is, in the oath, is to uphold the Tennessee Constitution and the United States Constitution.
Ms. Harris?
I think it's very important to the citizens of Murfreesboro to be a good listener. And when I say listener, and I'm not saying a hearer, because a lot of times, we hear things, but when we listen, we have a tendency to act upon those things. And we are the voice for the people, and we need to let our voice be heard, and we also need to follow through. We need to be able to balance the budget and make sure that every citizen enjoys the quality of life that they deserve. And we want our taxpayers to know that we are their voice. And we need to bring all of our citizens together, and sometimes, I think we forget some of the segments of our cities, like maybe the aging and the veterans. So we need to make everybody feel that they are part, because when we say Murfreesboro, we are talking about the entire city.
For our third question, we'll begin with Mr. LaLance, and that question is, how can quality of life in Murfreesboro be improved and expanded?
I think quality of life, the first tenet of that is going to be safety. I think that we have to do everything that we can do to make sure that our police and firefighters are well-staffed and well-equipped. I think if we have a safe community, it makes other issues that have come with quality of life so much easier. I think the city can do more to attract more higher-paying, higher-quality jobs, so that everybody in this city across the board has a chance to further improve their career.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, Mr. LaLance touched on a couple of key things. The first two being taking care of essential services like police, fire, and our educators. But beyond that, I think it's interesting to note a Beacon Center report. The Beacon Center is a free-market think-tank out of Nashville that recently listed Murfreesboro as the 20th-most business-friendly city in the state, 20 out of 50. Think about how much economic prosperity we're leaving on the table at that point. How many jobs left uncreated? If we want to raise the standard of living in our town, we need to make sure we're doing everything possible to let businesses take care of those problems.
Mr. Rainwater?
To raise the quality of life in Murfreesboro, one key thing we need to do is, we need to start recruiting a little better jobs. We've done an excellent job of recruiting many, what I refer to as basically starter jobs. We've done really good with some of the mid-level blue-collar jobs also. One thing we haven't done a good job in this city of is recruiting white-collar jobs. When I say white-collar jobs, I mean corporate offices. There are very, very few in our community, almost nonexistent, when you look at a community like Franklin. And if you look at the roads between Franklin and Nashville, or Franklin and Murfreesboro, and Murfreesboro and Nashville, it's pretty obvious where people are driving to get their jobs. You want to improve their quality of life? Let's look at how we recruit and see what we can do to make a better quality of life for our citizens.
Mr. Shirley?
You ask how we go about improving our quality of life. I think the first thing we all need to recognize is our quality of life here in this city is fantastic. We have an amazing city. That's why we all live and chose to raise our families here. That's why we've all committed and are desiring to work to make it even better, because we feel passionate about it. As a parent, things I'm concerned about are good schools, good parks, safety. As a resident, I'm one, I worry about making our community business-friendly to recruit and to retain quality jobs. For traffic, you ask for proper prior planning to prevent poor performance. Those are things that we can improve on. Those are things that we can work for, always establishing those goals.
Mr. Young?
I think one of the goals of the city council in the last five years is to include safe neighborhoods in everything that we do. Obviously, we need good schools, and we have good schools. We have good services such as fire and police. We have good medical services here. We're a recreational center. We're a medical center. We're an educational center. All these things make us a good place to raise our children. But we shouldn't rest on our laurels. We need to improve these services at all times. We need to make sure that our traffic flows, that we can get across town from one area to the other. We need to look to the future and make sure that our job base continues to grow. We do need more white-collar opportunities in this area.
Thank you. Mr. David?
Certainly, I think the first would be to reduce our debt. Eventually, the bottom's going to drop out with that, and it's very important we get that under control, because it's not under control right now. Less nonessential spending. Parks and Rec, for example, at the end of this fiscal year, received $11,700,000. I think some of that, actually, I think most of that could be spent on protective services. We have crumbling sidewalks downtown. It's certainly a stronger focus on the central core of the city, because even if you live in the outskirts, you still, chances are, come to the square quite often. Property owner rights, responsible zoning, and responsible growth. And lastly, the end of forced annexations.
Ms. Harris?
We need to keep up with the growth in Murfreesboro. Right now, we are growing, growing about 2% annually, and it's predicted by 2035, we're going to grow 50%. So we have to keep up with that growth, and we need to be financially responsible. We are handling right now a $117 million budget, so we have to make sure that budget is spread out equally as much as possible. And one of, another thing is being a vibrant city with a progressive mindset. And by doing this, we can promote family values. I think family is very important. And as we grow, we need to always be mindful and recognized and provide the services that are needed throughout the city.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce?
To continue the excellent quality of life that we already provide, I think it's essential that we maintain the quality of education that we already have in our city system and improve that with the technology that is going to grow those children into being productive citizens in the future. We want to prepare our infrastructure for that phenomenal growth that's going to come while we are doing that outstanding job of recruiting new jobs into our area. We have an excellent medical service center here. We have excellent fire and safety, all of these little parts and pieces that are important and make our quality of life secure. So we're going to have to continue to budget and plan properly for all of those.
Thank you. Our fourth question, we'll begin with Mr. Patterson. How do you determine priorities when achieving all goals isn't possible?
That's a great question and certainly a concern for the city going forward. I would start with essential spending. Frankly, I think our current council has a tough time distinguishing between essential and nonessential spending. I would start with, obviously, our debt service. That's kind of a requirement. Beyond that, police, fire, and our teachers, education. I certainly view Parks and Rec, as lovely as our Parks and Rec system are, and as much as our family enjoys them, they are a luxury item. Yet, next year, they are set to overtake fire and rescue as the fourth-largest budget item on the total budget. So I think sometimes, you have to make tough choices, and that's where mature adults have to step in and make those tough decisions.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yeah, I'll expand on that a little bit. I think we cover our essential services first and then move on from there to those things that we have, such as luxury items. However, what we shouldn't be doing is, we shouldn't be borrowing money for those luxury items. The only thing we should be borrowing money for, when it comes down to priorities, are long-term assets, like maybe building a school building that's $20 million or something along that. We definitely shouldn't be doing it for computers or police cars or things like that. Our priorities should be, spend the money we have, but when we run out of money, we have to stop, and that's when the priorities have to stop.
Mr. Shirley?
As everyone has said, when you prioritize, you have to draw lines. Our first priority in government is to provide for the public safety and public welfare of the people. And so first and foremost, you provide for fire, you provide for police, you provide for roads, and you provide for schools. I've been a big advocate for swing sets in our local community park, Bradville Road Park at Rogers Park. We have no swing sets. And I met with the Parks and Recreation Department, and they informed me that a set of swing sets would be $70,000. Well, that's two annual salaries for a firefighter. Obviously, we still don't have swing sets, because the firefighter would be the greater need.
Mr. Young?
I think you have to start with basic services. You have to maintain, make sure that the essential services are kept up at all times. We have to protect our firemen, our policemen, our first responders. We need to make sure that their budgets are where they need for the equipment they need to protect us. This brings into the play of safe neighborhoods. We do need to prioritize many items, but as our community grows, our parks are expanding, our outreach is expanding. We must look at all these items and make sure that we keep up. Technology is not something that is not a luxury item. We need to maintain our technology base in our schools so our children can keep up at all times.
Mr. David?
Well, certainly, the theme that seems to resonate with some of us up here is differentiating between essential and nonessential spending. A $26 million park is not essential. Our firefighters, our police, and our schools are essential. They should be the focus of the budget. Especially, we should not be spending on nonessential items such as a park or indoor tennis court if it causes us to go further into debt, because then we then have to add interest to that. Often hear that they've never raised taxes. You're not supposed to raise taxes. You're supposed to live within your means. So I think we should, the city council should definitely return to that.
Ms. Harris?
I think prioritizing, we need to look at our debt, and we also need to look at our tax base that we have. We need to look at the challenges that our growing city is encountering, and we need to look at the needs of making our town a playplace and a livable place to be. We need to look at the growth... We need to look at the growth of our schools, and we need to look at and keep up with technology. As your city council representative, I'm financially responsible for all citizens and to look at the whole picture and not just a segment. So when we prioritize, we need to look what's on the table at the time and see, based on the feedback from the citizens, what is needed.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce?
To be able to prioritize, we need to determine what our assets are and where we can leverage them most effectively. We want to make sure that we're not forgetting water and sewer and all those growth issues, roads, and those types of things that are essential services that have to be upkept and expanded if we anticipate the growth that is coming our way. If we do a good job in recruiting, we're going to be able to grow those services with the dollars that will come in with new homeowners. That will expand our schools, and we'll have to be prepared to grow our schools and our services at the same time. So prioritizing all of those things, it's going to take a lot of in-depth study to make sure we've met the needs of the citizens and the future growth that we anticipate.
Thank you. Mr. LaLance?
Yes, I agree. This is where making tough choices really boils, this is where it really comes, the rubber hits the road, so to speak. You know, we do have to provide these essential services, and that is everything from the safe, public safety, to the schools, to the technology, to the infrastructure. I mean, all those things are clearly have to be top priority. So we always are going to have to keep being fiscally responsible in mind and always prioritize with those essential services first. And then hopefully, if we've done enough, a good enough job growing our city in a smart, reasonable way, that we will also have some money in the budget to do some of these other luxury items.
For our fifth question, we'll begin with Mr. Rainwater. What do you feel is the number-one issue facing Murphysboro in the next five years, and how would you address that issue?
I think the best way to address the number-one issue I see is district representation. One thing, Murphysboro has grown to a point now where we have over 110,000 residents, and we still elect all our city council members at large. So what happens is, you wind up with a lot of people from a little area, which is kind of where we are because right now, the council is very consolidated in a very small area of Murphysboro. We have very other areas, large areas, where we've expanded the city, where we need to actually get some district representation. I don't have a problem with a couple at large, but we do need to divide the city up. You get district representation, then you will actually see what priorities really come out and what part of the cities. And we'll take care of most problems. Thank you.
Mr. Shirley?
I think we just spent 45-second seats kind of answering this previously. The biggest issue facing our city is providing the highest level of services in an efficient and cost-effective manner. We have an incredible school system led by dedicated teachers and administrators. We have the best fire and police and emergency services. Our park system is among the best in the entire state, but each of these services cost money. And so how we allocate our tax dollars shapes the direction of our city, and that is the biggest issue going forward.
Mr. Yen?
According to most phone calls that I get, it's traffic. But it really falls into things of how we manage growth because we are going to continue to grow. We have so many positive things in this community, from a great university to great parks to great education opportunities for our first and kindergarteners through the sixth grade. These are the things that we need to maintain and grow with and make sure that we have the best opportunities for our citizens to enjoy these things that we provide. Basic services are extremely important. If crime goes down and you're not, and you don't feel you're safe in your neighborhood, that's not a good opportunity. Our community has grown and continue, and will continue to grow, and managing the growth is extremely important.
Mr. David?
Well, there's two issues to this. The first one, we've been talking about off and on for the past few questions, which is the debt situation, the fiscal situation we're in. Secondly, I agree with, it is reasonable growth. Our urban growth boundary, we're at the urban growth boundary on the south side, believe it or not. We still have plenty of time, plenty of room to grow. The city's changed quite a bit in even the past five or 10 years. I feel like a lot of elected officials and city leaders are still in the smaller city mindset. It's a different city now. With that, I support hybrid district and at-large representation. A city our size should not still be all at large. And lastly, I think citizen engagement. I think hopefully with the referendum, and I believe it'll pass, where we can move the city election date to have more people involved, it's not just special interests. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
I think growth and our population, the way it is growing here, again, about 2% a year, 2,500 people annually, and the schools are already 200 children, more than anticipated, and keeping up with infrastructure and the services we have to provide, all while maintaining a good quality of life. I think it's very important that with our growth, we meet the challenges of the basic needs of our people. And to have a safe town means a whole lot. You can go to a lot of places, and the reason why Murphysboro, I feel, is a magnet, because I talk to people all the time, what, why are you staying here? Why did you come here? Said, "Just a good quality of life." So therefore, the more they come, the more we grow, so we have to be conscious of that.
Ms. Joyce? The number-one thing that we're going to have to prepare for in the next five years is keeping up with the growth that is coming. We're going to have to have proper planning and zoning to be able to maintain that growth, to prepare for the schools that will be necessary for those new residents, to provide for the fire and safety of those citizens as they come. We have a median population of 29 years old in this area, and because of those MTSU graduates that love what they found when they got here, much like myself, they're going to want to have homes. They're going to want to have schools that help their children. They're wanting all the services, the public safety, the water, the sewer, the roads, all prepared for them so that they can step into a new life together.
Mr. LaLance?
I think the number-one issue over the next few years is going to definitely be planning. We need to plan for the growth. We need to also be sure that we're planning for the what-ifs, you know, the different ways that that growth may happen. The city's about to embark on a comprehensive plan project over about the next two years, I think. It's going to build the framework for our next five, 10, 20 years of what this city and the growth patterns may look like. I think it's going to be very important for the council members or the people who get elected to be able to be willing to go listen to people, to put those things, those thoughts down, to be able to figure out how the budget is going to factor into that, and to make smart, reasonable decisions.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, it seems like we have a general consensus amongst the candidates here. The issues are balancing new growth with existing needs and infrastructure, striking a better balance between protecting existing homeowners and allowing new commercial development. It seems like we all agree that essential spending should take priority over luxury items such as Parks and Rec. So the real concern is going to be, who is willing to stand up for homeowners and make sure their rights are protected, and that the city does a good job of making sure there are adequate buffer zones, planned urban developments, restrictive covenants, to make sure that we all don't have many more Walmarts in our backyards, basically. Thank you.
Mr. Shirley, we'll begin the sixth question with you. Traditional and social media play a role in communicating council actions. Would you please describe how you interact with both?
Well, if you're following along on Twitter right now, you can go to hashtag Borough Forum, as we started that hashtag this morning, or this afternoon, right before the forum. I'm very active within Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Pinterest, Tumblr, Reddit, you name it. I'm involved in it as my role with Tennessee Cooperative Extension Program, Extension Technology and Communications. I have to utilize all of those to reach a diverse and widespread audience, and as such, I would use the same on city council, utilizing all of the social media aspects to reach out to our community, to be accessible to the community, to be responsive to everyone engaging using those formats.
Mr. Yen?
Social media has changed the world. In the past, we'd return phone calls. Now, we do emails and all the other many ways of communication that we do. All of our meetings, whether they're city council meetings or many board meetings, are televised. That gives us, the citizens, an opportunity to hear what we say and follow up on what we do. Social media has changed the game, not only in politics, public service, but the whole spectrum of our society, and it will be an integral part of what we do from now on. The city is engaged in, with many of these items that we do. We have websites and TV stations and Facebook, all the new, that aren't new, systems that keep the citizens informed all the time.
Thank you. Mr. David?
I have a strong issue communications. It's kind of my background. There is a representative in Michigan, his name's Justin Amash. He uses Facebook to ask questions. He also uses Facebook to justify every one of his votes. That is something I'm committed to. That was something I was committed to when I started my campaign. In fact, to go back to my first campaign promise was just to be transparent and accountable. Again, it's very important. Reddit's a new one. I love Reddit. I don't know how I'd use that in a, in a political way, but I can figure it out. But yeah, I'm all about communications and finding out to be engaged. That's a big part of my campaign right now, is using Facebook and social media, and a lot less traditional advertising such as radio and yard signs.
Ms. Harris?
Social media today is just the way of the times. If you don't have your modern phones, you're really lost. And don't let us lose our phone because we panic. So my son asked me for a number just today, and a number I used to always know, and I said, "Oh." And it took me five minutes to find my phone to look up that number. And social media has caused our brain sometimes to freeze. But we do use social media a lot on the city council, like for the weather and everything. And it's so valuable today that you can even look at the people you're talking to. But we have to have a, make sure we don't panic when these things go out because if they go out, we are a lost society. But it is a great way of communicating, and it is a great way for me, as a city council person, to get your feedback.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce?
Social media is part of what I do every day in my job. We have multiple Facebook accounts for our different businesses. I have a website and a Facebook account for my campaign as well, just like everyone else would. But I still think that you're going to have to maintain that person-to-person contact. There's nothing more important than somebody being heard and seeing in your eyes that you're listening and understanding. And I know that through working at the senior center with a lot of the activities, they don't necessarily want to only depend on that one tool. They like to have someone listening to them, talking to them, writing it down, and making sure that they're being heard. So even though the technology is available through the city and will continue to be so in a big part of all of our lives, we still have to maintain that person-to-person contact.
Thank you. Mr. LaLance?
Well, social media clearly is changing the world, and although I really don't care to know when my friends end up in that Walmart or at the XYZ Steakhouse or those types of things, there are clearly some practical uses for the government. I think, number one, it's going to be, it's going to make communication between government and the citizens much, much easier and much more transparent. I think as it relates to something like this election, it's a great tool for citizens to learn about their candidates and some of the things that they stand for and be as knowledgeable as they can be when they go to vote.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I'd actually like to come clean for the Murphysboro, all you city voters out there. My name is Brian Patterson, and I have a social media addiction. My wife reminds me all the time that I'm always on my phone. So yes, it's a very effective tool to stay in touch with folks. After the election, win, lose, or draw, I really look forward to using it to keep me folks informed. I've become a bit of a city council nerd, and I certainly look forward to spreading my nerd-dom to other folks interested in keeping up with city business. So no matter who wins, prepare to have the social media heat thrown on you in that respect.
Mr. Rainwater?
I think social media plays a very important role. It's a great way to keep a pulse on what's going on in the community. It's a great way to get the word out about small snippets of information that are very relevant to our lives. I don't want to go too far down that road. I still like the older style of communications, like email, websites, those type of things where you can do a lot more in-depth. You can probably ask any city council member. I'd like to write them emails from time to time. And you can, you know, it, social media can be used to draw the attention in, and then you go to the website for the details. There's a lot of ways you can work those things together to be a much more efficient council and government for our citizens.
Thank you. For our last question, we'll begin with Mr. Young, and I'll ask the question, and then you can add anything you'd like to. You have one minute on this particular round. And this is, above and above anything you've already said, would you like to add something? How, if elected, what will be your measure of success in office? And as I said, you can add anything. You have one minute.
Is this my closing statement also?
Yes.
Okay. I think my legacy would be that I was a small part of a great success story, which is the city of Murphysboro. We have many, many opportunities for people, both young, middle-aged, and seniors, to come here, create a safe, quality life with a quality education. And I think my legacy would be, would be a small part of that. In my closing remarks, I would like to use my experience as a husband, a father, a small businessman, and a councilman to ensure that my grandchildren have the same or better opportunities that we have had for great jobs and great quality of life. Murphysboro has provided many opportunities. We need to focus on the future so that these same opportunities are passed on to the next generation. I am Doug Young, and I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. David?
Thank you. To me, the, a metric of success would be certainly to just have an actually, actual better quality of life, significantly better than it is now. We do have a great quality of life now. It's setting the stick high, I understand. Better services, reduction in debt, so we're more fiscally solvent, amazing school system. Not to have a bridge or a road named after me, it's certainly not something I consider. But in my closing reaction, I'd again thank everyone for listening, for participating. As you take the answers into consideration, I'd encourage everyone to see if they can differentiate between someone that wants to be a politician and someone that wants to be a public servant. I want to be a public servant. On April 15th, before you head to Nashville to see Blue Raider baseball take on Vanderbilt, please vote in city elections. And to learn more about me, it's www.electaxel.com. Thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Harris?
The measure of success for me is going to be how you, the citizens, vote in this upcoming election. My dad always used to say, "If everyone likes you, you're doing something wrong." Well, my mom asked me one day, she said, "Why are you on the city council?" I said, "Mom, because I love people." And she handed me a poem entitled, "Don't Quit." And my favorite line in that poem is, "Rest if you must, but don't you quit." I'll always cherish the fact that she took a pen and at the bottom of the poem, she wrote, Philippians 4:13, "I can do all things through Christ who strengtheneth me." Citizens of Murphysboro, I've never quit on you. Please don't quit on me. When you go to the poll, check Madeline Scales Harris, your choice, and I promise you, I will continue to be your voice of reason. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Ms. Joyce?
The measure of success in working for the citizens of Murphysboro would to be have someone tell you that you've done a good job, that they respect the work that you've done and that you've listened to them and given them the services that they appreciate. By being fiscally responsible with the dollars that they invest, by making sure that they have safe environments to raise their families, those would be the measures of success working on this city council. I am a small-business employee as well as a small-business employer, so I work on both sides, understanding what it takes to keep a business going, and this city business is going. It will continue to grow, and I want to continue to be a part of it. I volunteered for many years with a lot of different organizations, on many city boards and commissions, and I'm honored that many of the citizens in this area have asked me to serve them even further as a city council representative. My name is Candy Joyce, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. LaLance?
Well, I suppose there are a lot of statistics that we could go through to measure success of a city, a higher average annual income, lower debt, lower taxes, and then just general things like improved quality of life. You know, I think a measure of success for me would be that, you know, I have viewed this opportunity as a way to get involved and to listen to both sides of the story, as there so often are in these situations that the councilor dealt, and to make smart, reasonable decisions. And that's really my biggest promise that I've been telling people, is that what I, that's what I intend to do, and I hope that that will earn the vote of all you out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson?
Thanks. I think the measure of success as a councilman would really be the reason that I got in this race to begin with, which is to get people plugged into what's going on in their backyard. Councilman Eddie, Eddie, excuse me, Eddie Smotherman once told me, we're talking about politics in DC one day, and he told me, "Brian, 90% of what you see every day is based right here in the city hall." And he was exactly right. And so since then, I've been on a And so since then, I've been on a mission to try to educate and motivate and organize people and to get not only involved in a city council race, but to actually plug in and pay attention to what's going on right here, because we have a lot of those same issues, debt issues, conflict of interest issues, et cetera. So that would really be a measuring stick for me, is just how many people felt like this community really belonged to them. So April 15th, I would remind you to come on out, as Axel said, heading out of the baseball game that afternoon, but first, make sure you stop by the ballot box. Brian Patterson, that's Brian Patterson, April 15th. Love to have your support. Thank you.
Mr. Rainwater?
One part I would like to see in, in our community here as a, as a measure of success would be, it'd be great to be known as the person who led the champion to, to get our city out of debt. And while we've had many years of no tax increases, I would like to see a tax decrease. I think that'd be a good start. It'd be a great start for our community, be a great signal to the corporate world, we've got to act together. Why don't you come here? Try our city out. That would be a, a great way to definitely deliver those businesses. The other thing is, if, if, if I was referred to as a champion for getting district representation. This is a very important topic for me, because I believe everybody needs a champion on the board that's from their community, from their small community. Murfreesboro is a large city. We're a great town. We do work together. However, what's going on in Blackman is a lot different than what's going on downtown. And when everybody has a champion, it acts as a check, checking balance, so that you don't wind up with a lopsided city. You don't want to spend too much money in certain areas. So that's how I would measure success. And my name's Jeff Rainwater, and I'd appreciate your vote on April 15th. Thank you.
Mr. Shirley?
How would I measure a, a measure of success? I think looking back in 10, 15, 20 years, if people recognize that my time on the, the council was marked by increased accessibility, by increased accountability, my goal, my pledge would be to answer every phone call, to respond to every email, to engage with every tweet. My wife would tell you, that would not be a problem. But that every voter would have a voice, every voter would have a representative, a responsible representation on the council, and, and such that we could look forward to planned growth that creates an environment that's attractive to, to business and industry alike while maintaining the high quality of living that has led to each and every one of us calling this city home. Again, as everyone is stating. My name is Stephen Shirley. I would appreciate your support and your vote on April the 15th.
Thank you. Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, the Cable Commission, and the City Communications Department, I want to thank all of the candidates for participating tonight. I also want to recognize the staff of the Communications Department for their cooperation in presenting this program. I want to remind all the citizens to go to the polls beginning March 26th to exercise this important right to determine who represents them. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates.